Good evening, everyone. Before we get our meeting officially started, I would like to welcome Mr. Mike Sommerfeld from Grace Menonite Church to lead us in our invocation. Welcome.
When I arrived this evening, I was asked to add a special prayer for Matt Lohman. So if you'll bow with me, we'll go ahead and pray. Father, I want to thank you for the privilege of being here this evening and to ask for your blessing on this board meeting and on the teachers and on the students of this community. This time of year, when we celebrate the coming of the greatest teacher of all history, it reminds us of the value of teachers, the input that they have in our lives. And I would just ask you to guide them this evening. Make the right decisions, consider the needs of the students, and allocate the resources they have in wise ways so that the students can be prepared for life. I pray, Father, that you'll protect them, protect their health, protect their safety, protect their sanity, help them, Father, to be efficient and effective educators and prepare the next generation to live in our country. I pray for all of it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you very much. And with, we'll give it seven seconds to be official. With that, I will call the meeting to order with all board members present excluding Colonel Little and Ms. Janelle Huff. Oh, and Randy Long. I apologize. Thank you. And that will take us straight to presentations. Mrs. Johnson?
Our spotlight student this evening is from Glenwood Elementary School, and Mr. Jim Rainey, the principal, is going to introduce her.
Good evening. I told her I would stay for under an hour, and for people that have spoken to me before and spent time around me, they know I like to talk, but I promised not to be very long. When having to pick a student to be the representative for Glenwood and its 400-plus student population, it might sound like it was difficult. There are some great people to choose from, but this young lady rose to the top. It would be easy to think it is because of her athletic ability. She is a little Olympics champion and one of only, I think, four EEBL Enid Elementary Basketball League two-time champions, winning this past weekend. But that is only a small part of who she is. She's a scout, as you can see, serving her committee, community. She is a star student, but these are all just a small part of who she is. I reflected on her GE practices, the current one being, "We will practice virtuous living by using the life principles." Her parents and family have raised her right. She embodies the life principles. So I'd like to introduce Glenwood Spotlight Student, Kimber Jung.
Please stand. Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, march.
But she has the certificate for you, and can I take your picture over here? Mr. Rainey, would you like to take a picture?
Come on down. Thanks for coming tonight, Kimber.
Our next spotlight student, the secondary spotlight student, is from Waller Middle School, and Ms. Jen Patterson is here to introduce them.
Good evening. I have the pleasure of introducing and recognizing, she's hiding from me, Sloane Turnbo. Sloane is a phenomenal young lady that attends Waller. She's been on the superintendent's honor roll all three years that she's been at Waller. She came in as a sixth grader and approached us with some leadership ideas and came in with some presentations, and she just wowed us. And she's done an amazing job the whole time she's been there. I don't want to steal her thunder, so I'm going to let her tell you about what she does at Waller that's so great.
Good evening. My name is Sloane Turnbo. Dr. Darrow and member of, members of the board, thank you for having me here to talk about my school. I am an eighth grader at Waller Middle School. I am currently a part of STUCO and NJHS. I am also in Waller's Palm Squad. I do not yet know what I am going to do after school, but I do know I would like to attend college. I am very proud of Waller's FCA. I have been attending FCA for three years now. This year, along with some of my friends, I have taken on the role of leading FCA. With this role, I can demonstrate my planning and communication skills. At Waller, we do many things to help our community. An example of this is raising money for Ainsley's Angels. This is during our annual run and roll. Another thing I really like about Waller is the teachers. There are many teachers who have helped me grow here, and I am thankful that I get to see them every day. Lastly, I would like to thank Mr. Mills, Mrs. Patterson, Mr. Henry for giving me the opportunity to come and speak tonight. I would also, once again, like to thank Dr. Darrow and the board. Thank you.
Congrats, Sloane. Thanks for coming tonight.
Our next recognition of the evening is Vocal Music All-State Members, and so I'm going to turn it over to Matthew and Mark Johnson.
Thank you so much for having us out this evening. I get the privilege every year of introducing our Vocal All-Staters, and I'm so excited for this group. This year, we had 12 Vocal All-Staters for Enid High School, which makes the second most we've ever had. Fifteen is the top, so we're going to try and beat it next year, but we are so proud of all these kids. I'm going to read you their names, how many years they've made All-State, and if you guys just want to step forward when I read your names. We have first-year All-Stater, who's a senior, Mr. Blake Allen. First-year All-Stater freshman, Gracie Atkinson. Second-year All-Stater junior, Delaney Carruthers. First-year All-Stater senior, Landon Collins. Second-year All-Stater senior, Savannah Crawford. First-year All-Stater senior, Oakley Fielder. And then we have freshman, Mr. First-year All-Stater, Mr. Antavious Lopez, who couldn't be here tonight. Then we have another freshman, first-year All-Stater, Harrison Lyon. First-year All-Stater freshman, Jude Marin. First-year All-Stater junior, Cooper McKee. First-year All-Stater senior, Brock Neus. And second-year All-Stater junior, Ani Ortiz. The freshmen will spend three days in OKC in January, and the sophomores through seniors will spend four days in Tulsa in January, where they go and sing with the top 25 in their voice part in the state. So all these kids behind you in their respective parts are top 25 in the entire state through all classes of schools. So music, we compete 6A down to 2A altogether. So we are really proud of these kids, and just give them another round of applause.
Some proud mom and dad.
Congratulations.
We appreciate you sharing them with us. So our next recognition is our Band All-State, and Mr. Matthew Johnson is going to introduce him, because he also is in two of Matthew's choirs, so.
Josh, come on up. I get the privilege of introducing senior Josh Peterson. He is the made trumpet for Band All-State. I fortunately this year get to have him sing in two of my choirs, and he is awesome and almost made Vocal All-State, but he is even a better trumpet player. And tomorrow night at our concert, if you want to come check him out, he's singing, playing trumpet, all of the things altogether. So I just wanted to send a big congratulations, because I think it's the first instrumental All-Stater since 2018, and Josh, we are really proud of Josh and all of his accomplishments. So I'm so really proud of him.
Congratulations, Josh.
Something to definitely be proud of, very talented fine arts students. And then we have a very talented baseball player amongst us, and I'm going to let Coach Gore tell us and introduce this young man.
All right. Thanks, everybody, for having us out here today. You know, we just came from practice, so I didn't have time to change. But Garrett, I'm talking a little bit about Garrett. Garrett was chosen as the Oklahoma Baseball Coaches Association Player of the Year for 2023. He was also chosen as Player of the Year by Prep Baseball Report for the year of 2023. Both of these awards are usually garnered by seniors. So these are both big-time awards that, like I said, they're both usually for seniors, and he won both of them this year. So we're very proud of him. He's helped us, you know, go to the state tournament twice and a state runner-up finish. But I will say this, the number-one thing about Garrett is not only is he a great player, but he's also a great teammate. As you can see, his team's here to support him tonight, and he's an even better person. So we're very happy that Garrett's a Plainsman, and we love you, Garrett.
Say something to us, Garrett.
Thank you, Coach Gore. I want to start off by thanking Coach Gore for nominating me and just for everything he does for Enid baseball. And also, I want to thank the team, because without them, this couldn't be possible. That's all I've got.
Congratulations. Congrats, Garrett. Best luck, boys, this year. Thanks for coming out tonight.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Okay, that takes us to item two, Audience to Visitors. We had no one sign up this evening. Moves us right to item three, Dr. Darrow, the superintendent's report.
The first thing I want to talk to you guys about, and I put a handout at your desk area, but we kind of had a major shift this past week with OSSAA rules. And starting July 1st of 2024, every kiddo is going to have the opportunity to transfer to a different school one time and not have to set out of eligibility. So this is kind of like the college portal that we all hear about, where Dylan Gabriel's going and where Gunner Gundy's going. This is kind of the OSSAA's version of this. Lot of talk has been going around amongst school administrators, and I don't know how this is going to play out. I don't know if this is going to be good for Enid or bad for Enid, or I don't know if anything will change. So saying all that, this is a big change for Coach Mansfield and for all of our athletics department. So just an FYI, that's coming down the pipe. So after that, I'll turn it over to you, Coach Mansfield, for the item B, which will be the presentation of athletics. And I believe you all have a handout there at your area as well.
Thank you for having me. You also have a little bit more detailed PowerPoint that I emailed you guys, just because I was under very strict time limit, limitation, so I wanted to make sure I had a brief one, then I had a more detailed one. Over the past five months, I really kind of got my feet settled in a little bit, but I really feel like our athletics program is on a very steady increase. I'd like to tilt that thing up a little bit more and kind of get a little bit more intense on the way up, but we're going to get there eventually, our fall sports. Girls and boys cross-country, football, fast-pitch softball, and volleyball. We had 32 all-conference athletes, five in girls cross-country, five in boys cross-country, eight football, eight softball, and six volleyball. We had seven district awards. They were all softball players, and two regional postseason awards, both in softball. Really big stickler right here is, we've had three of the five teams were academic achievement award winners for their respective sports, girls cross-country, softball, and volleyball. In-season achievements, we had girls cross-country, and six of their meets had top-five finishes as a team. For boys cross-country, we had four top-five finishes. We had our softball team finish in the regional semifinals. They lost out to Broken Arrow. Football, made it to the first round of the playoffs and lost to Edmunds Santa Fe. Volleyball, they were conference runners-up. Our middle school numbers, we had 77 football players for Waller Middle School, 52 for Longfellow. Our softball numbers were 23 with combined middle schools. Volleyball, we had 52. Cross-country, we had 35. For our Palm Squad, we had 28 members in our middle school. And then for our cheer program, we had 34 members. Waller Middle School wanted me to highlight their, they were tournament champions in Claremore. And then they also, to finish the season, they beat OBA and Chisholm, which kind of gives us reigning bragging rights in Enid. So cheer, their game-day competition, they went down to UConn, and they finished runners-up. I think it was the first time that they went down there and finished in the top five. So things are looking good on that. And then our Palm Squad over this past weekend, the OSDTDA state competition, our small group finished fourth, our large group finished fourth. And Emily, Emma Holland was our All-State selection. I think she finished seventh in the individual competition there. And I think for our small group, I think they may have finished half a point out of getting on the podium. So really good things happening with our athletics, our activities. Vocal music, speech debate, orchestra, Big Blue Band, and esports. Mr. Johnson kind of stole my thunder a little bit when he already threw out, we had 12 All-State selections, but that's his baby. I give him credit for that one. We have our Christmas concert combined with orchestra tomorrow at the auditorium. Speech and debate, Ms. Uthea is doing a great job with that. We had 10 All-State qualifiers in different speech categories, humorous, dramatic, monologue, and poetry. And then our debate team had 10 all-tournament recognitions. All those kids are detailed in that PowerPoint, if you would like to go kind of see those and who did it individually. Orchestra, the Enid High Symphony Strings earned an excellent rating at the OSSAA state contest. Waller Middle School had two students win spots at the prestigious North Central Honors Orchestra, and Emerson had one student win a spot in the same exact situation. Big Blue Band, they won superior rating at the Tri-State Parade, superior rating at the Tri-State Field Competition, superior rating at the Fairview Marching Contest, excellent rating at the OSSAA Regional Marching Contest. They've had 10 students make it to the second round of the All-State auditions, and one student made it to the All-State, and it's the first one in five years. Their Christmas concert will be Thursday, December 14th, in the auditorium. Our esports, they made the playoffs in their respective sports. I really am kind of learning this one, but their sports are by games. So Rocket League, Overwatch, and Guilty Gear, those are the games that they made the playoffs in this past weekend. They competed in the Smash Brothers State Qualifier, and they were top 10, or top 20 finishers in that. And the OESL, which is the league that they play in, they were River Sports Smash Brothers Open Champions. Winter sport preview, right now, we're currently in basketball season, swim season, and wrestling. Our girls' basketball team is currently one and four, but they have, all their losses are to top-20 ranked teams. Boys' basketball are two and three, and we host Bartlesville tomorrow at 3:00, 4:45, 6:00, and 7:30. Our swimming is actually hosting their very first home swim meet right across the road at the Y. Big bragging right here, beat Ponca City, but the big thing is, they were significantly ahead of us last year in the state tournament, and we beat them this year. A lot of swimmers are dropping personal times by more than 30 seconds. And last week, many top-eight swimmers and finished top-five in majority of our relays. So good things happening there. Wrestling, this past weekend, we hosted the Mid-American Nationals or the, or the Man Tournament, where we hosted 38 different teams from numerous states. Steven Brooks, our own wrestler, placed fifth in his weight class. We've had three girls place in the top-five at their current meets. And then we have two duels this week, one at Edmunds Santa Fe, that is Thursday, the 14th, and then on Saturday, they are at Norman North on the 16th.
Certainly a lot going on. Thanks for the report, Coach Mansfield. Does anybody have any questions for Coach Mansfield? Well, thanks for staying on top of it. Appreciate you being here tonight. And look forward to a spring review after spring sports. Thanks, Coach Mansfield. We'll move on to item C, which is our substitute report on ESS with Mrs. Christy Upchurch. And I believe you have a handout as well.
You do have handouts? Okay, good. Excellent. I'm also going to introduce to the board, this is Courtney, my supervisor. She came today. We had our mid-year review, and so she got to come and be with me today. On your handouts, I believe that the order they go in, okay. I have mine in a mixed-up order. Right now, currently, you see, we have 100, and the number on the slide says 103. We're actually at 101 after a couple got deactivated, but that's going to get back up there this week, actually. And there are two active for child nutrition. And I have hired 84 new substitutes from July until this past Friday. And so 84 is a big number, because last year, during the entire school year, the most we ever had active was 70 to 75, and it fluctuated. And so so far this year, we've already hired 84, and that's bringing, allowing our total active subs to stay near 100. And so my hope is to keep it growing, continue to grow. I think a perfect number, if you did the math, is about 125, and so that will be our striving point. With our, with the district and the draw to people who want their foot in education, the district has been able to hire five ESS substitutes as full-time certified teachers, as well as 12 of the ESS substitutes as paraprofessionals, teachers aides. And so, you know, I always tell, tell my people that it's a good way to get your foot in the door. Get in there, make a name for yourself, show them what you got, and they'll scoop you right up. So that's a good, a good partnership we have going there. Just a few little of the pictures that were on that slide are some of the things that we do. We handed out candy here for Monroe Elementary School kids. I did the Job Fair at Vance Air Force Base. The, the blue now hiring is what is on the marquees right now on the campuses. And then every month, I have a drawing. If they, my substitutes that work 10, more than 10 days in a month, I put them in a drawing, and Ms. Vanessa Decker was our winner for the last, last month's drawing, so I put that one in there, too. On the next slide is kind of our, our data slide comparing the previous years. As you can see, the number of absences, total absences for this year, 2,443. There, we discussed this kind of at the end of the year last year about the no-sub-required and the raw data versus ESS data. So if you take out 198 of those absences that did not need a substitute filled by ESS, then that's where you get the, the total absences. But we have increased the number of fills, and this year, this semester so far, as of Friday, last Friday, we are sitting at a 92% fill rate, which is an 11% increase over last fall. So I'm very pleased that we're able to do that. All campuses for this first semester have had a fill rate of 80% or greater. So every campus is, is being filled at that rate. So we don't have any, any campuses that are severely lacking for coverage. So that's, that's. So that's, that's a definite positive. And twelve out of our sixteen weeks so far, we have had a ninety percent or better fill rate. So I'm hoping to continue that momentum through this week and then get going in the spring again. The next slide, just some of the stuff that we engage and talk and get with our substitutes and get them working and get in the community to make people aware that we are always hiring new substitutes. We have surveys that our substitutes are sent about their first day that they worked, about their tenth day that they worked and so on. That way we can kind of get some feedback from them, what they're experiencing, where we may be able to help them make it a better experience, things like that. Mathly raffles, the newsletter I send out, kind of, it's, sometimes it's celebrations, sometimes it's things like, hey, we need to watch this. Sometimes it's a mixture of everything. So just trying to communicate with them. And then I also send out mid-year and end-of-the-year surveys so that I can get feedback from them, not only about their experiences on the campuses, but how I'm doing as a coordinator for them. We have job postings on our own website. We use, you guys have posted the jobs on your website. There's flyers on the peach jar on the campuses. So and then we post on Facebook, Instagram, trying to get the message out there that we are always hiring and that we, we want people to, to come and apply to be a substitute. On the right-hand side, I won't go through the whole list, but there's some fun things that we've done. We hung flyers in the bathrooms at the parks. That one was an interesting one. But and it didn't occur to me until we were doing the mid-review earlier, but hanging those flyers in the bathrooms at the parks this summer actually resulted in the hiring of a certified teacher for third, I think, I believe it's third grade at Coolidge. And so she called me wanting to sub because she saw a flyer in a restroom at a park while she was taking her child to the park and now she's a teacher. So I mean, it, it all works, right? And then the picture on there of the pink flamingo, we did the, I went and did the turkey trot with the little ones at McKinley and just, it's all about, that's, that's what we are all here for. We're here for the kids. And if I have to put a pink flamingo costume and go run, I, I'll do it. That's all right. So I just have really had a lot of success this year. And I actually have a few of my substitutes that were gracious enough to join me this evening. We have, if you guys will stand, we have Ms. Angela Cochran, Esmeralda Moore and Alicia Merriman. They, I mean, they represent, they're representing the hundred substitutes we have out there. But I felt like it was important to put them in front of you guys because I may be making the phone calls, but they're the ones in the classrooms with the kids. They're the boots on the ground, so to speak. They're the ones out there doing it every day. And I greatly appreciate them answering my phone calls and text messages. So I just wanted to say thank you, guys.
And as a quick thank you to the subs, we did get them a little gift card for showing up tonight. So I just wanted to, I'll bring those out to you, but I just want to say thank you to the subs. Thank you to the board for having us and allowing us to come and present what we're doing.
Well, thank you all for coming tonight. Do we, board members have any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you, Christie, and thank you ladies for coming and showing up every day when you do.
Absolutely.
Awesome.
It's a great partnership.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Okay, that takes care of item C. Thanks again, Christie, for coming. Let's move down to item D and E. And these are actually part of our accreditation that we have to cover these every year, part of our accreditation standards. So we're going to have Mr. Liddell talk about the college remediation report and also the high school dropout report. Mr. Liddell.
Good evening, Dr. Darrow. Good evening, board members, audience, everyone who's here tonight. As Dr. Darrow said, part of the accreditation is the dropout report, which in turn we have to reference our graduation rate. It's a neat piece in terms of we actually track the data for each of the cohorts. And we're a year behind on this, not us, but the way that the state runs it so that everything can be verified with the data and make sure everyone's in the right place. So they, they stall a year before they actually report and we look at these report cards. So from there, I'm going to start with our twenty-two cohort and then we'll go twenty-one and twenty because they give that fourth, fifth and sixth-year piece. On the four-year, we are sitting at our performance being eighty-one point one percent for Enid High School. The state sits at eighty point one, so we're one percent above the state there. From there, we then jump up to our fifth year. Our fifth-year cohort jumps up dramatically where we keep and stick with our kids and that goes up to eighty-seven point six percent, whereas the state sits at eighty-two point four. And then in the sixth year, we would be all the way up to eighty-seven point nine and the state does jump up to eighty-four nine a little bit there, but we're well above the state average there. And we're always driving that forward. Our goal, which we have well documented, is to get to ninety-two percent or higher. My goal is to get to a hundred, but you know, life does happen. And then when you look at this, guys, this is, this is students that establish eligibility with us at seventh, seventh grade. So if they disappear along the way or they're not tracked, they move out of state, that all goes into this. So when you look at the numbers at first, because I was like eighty-one percent, we're much higher than that. And we are for the kids that stick with us, but there's kids that disappear along the way and move on and go from there. By the fifth and sixth-year piece are important, students who either get behind on credits or students who have maybe got various challenges, whether it's special education pieces that they stick in school longer or maybe EL and maybe need repeat time, all of these things are all factored in. So that's kind of what gives us our piece there. What's a really fascinating piece and turns into the other report that we're going to share on is what does this actually do for students going off to college? So in the fall, fall of twenty-two, the fall, first-time degree-seeking freshmen from Enid High School, there was a hundred and four students. And the key piece for this that I'm always interested in and I think we really look to serve on on how we're performing and preparing our students, is that this, this was thirteen point six percent of those students needed remediation. So considering the learning gap, which you look at the COVID and then really the fallout year afterwards, these are the students that this was a major player for them. I think this is really good performance and our students are well-prepared, coming through and getting their education at Enid High School. So, thank you, guys. Any, any particular questions on any of that? Super. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Ms. Liddell. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming this evening. All right, let's keep moving along then. Let's go to item F. And just some, just a discussion here, these are some of the important dates to remember. Just want to remind everybody, it's coming Wednesday, we have our EPS Education Foundation Celebration. That'll be at the gymnasium Wednesday afternoon. And then we do have, we do have winter break coming up here. All those kiddos that just left will remind us of that. Winter break will actually start Friday afternoon and it'll run through January. And then we have teachers report in January second. We have half-day workday and a half-day PD. And then all students return, resume school back on Wednesday, January the third. And a couple of other things I want to remind everybody of, our next board meeting will be Tuesday. The regular board meeting will be Tuesday, January sixteenth because we celebrate Martin Luther King Day on the fifteenth. So we pushed it back a day. And then we also have our OSSBA training at six o'clock on Wednesday, the twenty-fourth. So busy times are coming for sure. All right. Enrollment numbers, like to report, enrollment's still very healthy. We're at seventy-six, twenty-one, which is slightly down the last month, whatever I reported. We're actually five down from where we were back in November. But again, enrollment's healthy and we'll continue to monitor that week after, or excuse me, month after month. Takes me to item H, school board filings. Like to report to everybody that Mr. Mans, Chad Mans ran unopposed in Ward Seven. So appreciate Mr. Mans, stick around and serve it on the board for us for another term. Ward Three, Dr. Kim Teneus ran unopposed. Dr. Teneus is not here this evening, but I have offered the invitation to, to come and start attending these board meetings with us and, and just kind of learn how the process of procedures go. Hopefully, Ms. Dr. Teneus will be able to attend the next upcoming ones. And then also, just want to report back to everyone that just a big thank you to Janelle Huff. Janelle has previously served in Ward Three. And about ten days ago, she called me and informed me that she was not going to be rerunning. So appreciate her service. She could not be here tonight, but again, appreciate her serving our school district. And again, thank you, Mr. Mans, and look forward to working going forward. And I should also note that Dr. Teneus will, will go on in April. She'll be officially sworn in in April, board meeting, so. All right. Any questions there? Not? Keep going. Okay, item I, bond committee update. Like to just briefly touch on this and if any of the leadership team would like to chime in, please do so. We had another good bond meeting, committee meeting last November. That was the last Wednesday of the month. And we also have one scheduled for this coming Thursday. We have several handouts there at your area, trying to engage some more participation with that, with that QR code and then that's the investment flyer that we've, you guys have seen many times, comparing us to other six-eight schools. We're going to continue to meet, as I said, we'll meet again this Thursday. We'll meet again in January. I believe our next one is January seventeenth. Between now and then, we also plan to run a poll to our parents to gauge their interest and their support. And that poll will be going out January eighth to the twelfth. So before the next board meeting, I'll have more information, report back to you guys on some of our feedback from our parents and guardians. Just also want to say it's, it's very beneficial to have such a great relationship with OSSBA. Amber Fitzgerald's helped us out tremendously with these steps. And also Ron Fisher with McDonald's and Associates, Dr. Robinson works closely with them. And since, and Dr. Robinson, correct me if I'm wrong, but since we already have two existing bonds, if we would roll a third bond, there would be no more charges to us as a district. It would just continue with the service charges. So that's very positive as well. Overall, I feel like the discussions have been very positive, very upbeat. I, from what I can report, I don't believe a one-point-two million is, is too much to ask for our patrons. I think our patrons and our committee members feel like we do need to support our school and get us up a little higher on our, compared to other six-eight schools. And a little bit later tonight, Dr. Robinson's going to talk in great detail about how much it takes to maintain Chromebooks at our school. And as when we talk about the one-point-two million potential bond, seven-hundred thousand of that a year is dedicated to Chromebooks. And so again, we're a one-to-one school district and we definitely don't want to go backwards. So be more happy to answer any questions. Leadership team, have I covered all the details? Anything that I have not covered? I would say that we're becoming to come under a time deadline. If we would like to run a bond by April, then we need to have a resolution call by February first, which we still have time to do so. But every, every week that goes by and every month that goes by, we need to finalize and start coming towards that, so. Anyways, good discussions and we'll, I will continue to keep you all posted. Any questions? I'll let Dr. Robinson chime in. I know that three-hundred thousand is what we've asked for a year. Today's budget, that would get us two yellow route buses or perhaps maybe one activity bus, but Dr. Robinson?
Yeah, the, the plan is to keep our fleet up to date. And so the, this year, we bought two buses, as you, as you recall. Before that, the last buses that were purchased were in twenty eighteen. And so that's, that's where our number is really coming through. So we'll actually go back to the last round of buses, I believe, are about two-thousand-eight models that we still have going down the road. So we'll start with those. And over that nine-year period, we'd replace one or two buses annually. If we come up on a situation where we have to replace more than that, that would require us to use some general fund dollars where bus prices sit right now, which, which if you have a bond package there, that helps alleviate some of that pressure off the general fund to make sure we can keep those good buses going down the road. In, in that, it will, it's actually student transportation. So we could also purchase Suburbans and vans and some of our smaller buses. They don't all have to be the large buses. So it'll be a combination of vehicles purchased over that nine-year period.
Any other questions, board members? Okay. We'll keep that in your, in your back of your brain, back of your mind, excuse me. So now let's go to item J, Eisenhower Elementary Update. And I've got a lot to report here. I'm going to, I'll try to do it as quickly as I can to make sure we're all on the same page. But up to this point, Michael Cooper, former mayor, has raised us five-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars towards this Eisenhower project. And again, that's five-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars towards the anticipated six million that we would, that it would take. Again, our rough estimates for a new elementary would be thirty million. This is an eighty-twenty bond, so, or an eighty-twenty proportional. So eighty percent would be government, twenty percent would be us. So we're looking for six million. Dr. Robinson and I have had several conversations with the city of Enid and Cooper, and Michael Cooper and also the Department of Defense. Unfortunately, we've had a slight setback with one of our plans. Cooper was pursuing the P-three grant with the city and they're, for whatever reason, the P-three grants are not going to be able to be able to used because, to be able to be used because the Eisenhower sets on school land and not city land, which was required for the P-three. So we've had a slight setback on the P-three that he's pursuing. So we've kind of stopped that right now. What we'd like to do is shift our application and what we are working on now is now we're doing an application for a design to build. So instead of doing an application, that would just be one project as a whole. We're now, we're now starting a second application for just the design to build. We're doing this for a couple of reasons. Number one, we need to get some progress going on this. And so the other thing too is it takes a lot of time to design and build an elementary. So by rough estimates, Dr. Robinson, correct me if I misspeak, but about a year, ten to twelve months to design to build. So if we can get this application in in January, knowing that it's going to take about a year to get the design to build, that will allow us more time to fundraise. Cooper's got a couple of other ideas he's pursuing. We're still working with the city. ERDA, Dr. Marcy Maxx working with us. I talked to Representative Chad Caldwell Friday. He's going to call into the governor for us. So if we can get this application for the design to build, which is, is going to be required anyways. Number one, it'll allow us to do some more fundraising, but also number two, that original five-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars I talked about, we can use that for our eighty-twenty portion. So in big summary here, my big takeaway is here is we're not out of the fight by any means. We just had a little setback here. We are pursuing the design to build and we're going to be able to use those funds. And I actually saw David Mason, our mayor at Eisenhower yesterday, or excuse me, at Vance Air Force Base yesterday. We were talking and he, he hit it, actually nail on the head. He said, "It doesn't matter who gets credit. Let's just get this thing done." And that's exactly where we're at. We've got a lot of people pulling the rope together. And we're, I'm still very, very optimistic we're going to get this done. Dr. Robinson, you've been in every meeting that I've been in. Anything that I've missed or misspoke of? Yeah. So January tenth is our next meeting and hopefully we'll get that application for the design to build done on January tenth and we can start moving forward on it. Any questions? It's a lot. Okay.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry. I love the fact that we've got almost six-hundred thousand raised. That's awesome. Would rolling the remaining balance into a bond, since we're planning on doing one each year for the next nine years, could we just do a larger bond package? Would that be feasible if we can't come up with enough grants to cover the entire balance? Do we have that amount of space or millage?
We possibly could. There are some red flags with that though because the bond package that we're, that we've, the committee has formed is really touching every child from pre-K all the way up through high school and not just targeting one specific school. That was the one thing that, that the committee was very, it was discussed, I will tell you that. But that was one thing that where every, every kiddo is going to get on a bus. Every kiddo is going to be using those Chromebooks, security and safety. The other thing too is when we talk about bonds, they come with timeframes that can't be negotiated. And as I've proven, we're, we're very, we're not on a strict timeframe by any means. So it would, it would probably be a little too binding to answer your question. Anybody? P-three grant was a grant that Cooper was working with the city on and I don't know much more than that, Suzie. It's, yeah. Because the Eisenhower Elementary is on school land inside the fence. It had to be on the city land. That's right. Yep. So a slight setback. And one other thing I'd like to say is that Cooper, I talked to Cooper Saturday and Michael Cooper, excuse me, he had a very good meeting with Senator Langford in DC and that Senator Langford has got him in contact with his grant writer and he's got two grants he's personally working on there too. So again, we're working, we're trying, we're beating the bushes. Okay. Moving on, let's go to item K. I'll let Mr. Rader speak a little bit about this. This is our three-year-old partnership. As I've talked to you guys about with the big five community services. This is a three-year-old, trying to get the three-year-old students into our school system a little bit earlier. I realize that application's blank, but we need to get the application approved before we can get somebody hired. So Randy, you want to talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, this application.
Yeah, this application, approving this just allows us to give Head Start permission to start looking so that they can hire. They have a designated salary schedule, just like what we do. It's very much in relation to what we pay our teachers. And when they, when they reference a teacher or a teacher assistant, it's much the same as what we reference whenever we're talking about our daycare workers. Salary range is going to be about the same. So we're not, we're not expecting more than probably $20,000 expense to the district per year, which again is probably on the high side. But we don't have the numbers to fill in here because we don't have the people hired yet, but we can't get the people hired until we have this contract with them. So we're asking that you approve this so that we can start this classroom at Carver. We feel like this will be a benefit to our community and serve an area of the community that's probably not served as well as it could be at this point.
Absolutely. Thanks, Ms. Rader.
With that, I will entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Matt Lohman.
Second.
Second by Matt Sampson. Any further discussion? And we will vote. Matt Lohman?
Yes.
Chad Mance?
Yes.
Joe Blackwood?
Yes.
Matt Sampson?
Yes.
Tori Turnbo, yes. The motion carries.
Thank you all for that. We'll hopefully get moving on that quickly. Next would be the last item on my report, it is item L, and it is another action item. And I am seeking your approval to start VoAg at Enid High School. We've talked about this for many years now, and I'd love to put this in action. And I know it sounds a little weird to do this in December, but I'd like to get this done in December so we can start advertising for a Ag teacher and get one hired in January or February. Remind everybody that we've studied several 6A schools. We've also talked to EEA, EEA's supportive of starting this program as well. And Dr. Rhodes has polled all of our, some of our students at the high school and middle school, has got some data here to look at. And if you'll just briefly look at that, I mean, when you have 271 kids that are interested in welding, I think that speaks volumes about that. Dr. Rhodes, you want to add anything on the survey?
No, I mean, I really just feel like our students are really wanting some variety and more hands-on opportunities to explore. And I feel like this is, could be a really game changer at Enid High School, and even down in the eighth grades, once we kind of get it up and running.
So again, I think we've got the students there. We've identified a portion there at Enid High School where we'd like to house it out of. We're going to get funding from the State Department, and I think this is a long time coming. So would I be to answer any questions you might have? Joe?
Did we cross-check the data to see if the 271 in the light welding, how many of them might actually be in Autry's program at the moment?
I'm not sure.
Because if we don't know that, and we say we have 271 interested, but 270 of them are already enrolled?
Well, we only did ninth, 10th, 11th grade. We didn't even survey the seniors who are already in Autry as well.
Okay.
Got you. I think, don't quote me on this, but I think we have left, less than 30 in welding right now.
Yes.
So we would still have well over 200 that would be interested in that portion. And again, as you can see, the small engine, the veterinary science, there's a ton.
I know we talked about this before. What is the expense on our side that we project for this?
Right now, we're potentially just be the salary for the teacher. We would receive some funding to offset some of that salary, not near enough to, you know, teacher funding-wise, a complete funding. But considering that we're not going to start a barn, or we're not going to purchase land for an animal farm, we just really look at this for the small repairs there at the high school, the small shed potentially. I would say well under 100,000 to start the program. Dr. Robinson, do you agree with that?
Yeah, I think the spaces we've looked at at the high school, because really what we've been told from the schools we visit is let your, let your teacher and your students drive your additions. And when we talk about additions at high school, we're not talking about adding on classroom space. We need covered shop space for projects to be done. And so I would say 100,000 is a pretty good estimate. At the most, we might be 200,000 if we have the student interest in the lives there. And we know that you get 250 kids that sign up for an Ag program, and you know that in two years, you've got to be somewhere different than in that first year, you kind of got to get a jumpstart on some of that. So I'd like to give you a really hard number on that, but I think 100 to 200,000 is pretty reasonable on facility-wise, so.
Potentially, we could, you know, we could see so many possibilities from the welding, the cutting of the metals, to the greenhouse, botany potentially, and then small animals. So there's endless possibilities here, and it'll be exciting to watch.
So do we have an idea of, are we going to let?
All right. Go ahead.
Okay.
Are we going to let the teacher that we hired take over and build the program from the start? Are we going to give them some guidance of type of welding, the kind of program? Are we going to try to mirror Autry?
No. And I'll let Dr. Rhodes chime in a little bit, but what we'll do is we'll do a pre-enrollment this coming spring, whenever we get all of our ninth grade, 10th grade, 11th grade kids, when they start entering into power school. And I anticipate us to have, intro to, intro to Ag is required one, and with intro to Ag, you can do so many different things with the welder, with the welding and such. Probably the communication speech, because there's definitely a grid interest there with their speech program. That'd actually help us out with the graduation, because that gives those kiddos an art as well. So that's probably where I would say we would start with was intro to Ag, since we have so much, such a large interest. And then this first year, then see where it goes from there. Dr. Rhodes, do you anticipate anything different?
No, I, part of that whole Ag process will be FFA, which encompasses all of that as far as speech and the contest and things. So our goal is that we can get this approved, start an aggressive look for a teacher that is somewhat seasoned, that understands and can build the program from the ground up with some experience.
With that, I will entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Chad Mance. Second by Joe Blackwood. Any other discussion? And we will vote. Matt Lohman?
Yes.
Chad Mance?
Yes.
Joe Blackwood?
Yes.
Matt Sampson?
Yes.
Tori Turnbo, yes. The motion carries.
Awesome. Thank you very much. That concludes my portion. Thank you. Thank you all.
You're welcome. Thank you. Takes us to item four, regular business. We can approve item four A1 through eight together. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Motion by Matt Lohman, second by Joe Blackwood. Any discussion? And we will vote. Matt Lohman?
Yes.
Chad Mance?
Yes.
Joe Blackwood?
Yes.
Matt Sampson?
Yes.
Tori Turnbo, yes. The motion carries. Item B, discussion and possible action to approve the district financial report for November 2023. Dr. Robinson, I'll turn it to you.
All right. Well, the highlight for this month's financial report, as you know, the financial report runs a month behind our meeting, so this is really through November 30th. Revenue collections, it's been a, it's been a five-month period, but it's really a four-month period for any type of summarization of collections, which is your state aid and all those larger numbers that come in. So we are collected at $45 million already this year. I realize that 21 of that is carryover from the previous year, but we're looking at a budget based on the estimate of needs at $97 million. So we're almost to the halfway point of what the estimate of needs said, really over a five or four-month period, however you want to look at that. So we're not even halfway through our 11-month collection period at that point in time. So I would say revenue collection is in a really good spot. Again, encumbrances, while they're a little bit more than we may all think they should be, I think we're meeting student needs and doing what's best for our district with where they lie at. And here in a little bit, you're going to see that those are, we're actually still underencumbered based on where the projection for this year is going to be. So things are looking really good, once again, on the finance report for November.
Thank you, sir. I will entertain a motion to approve item 4B. Motion by Joe Blackwood?
Second.
Second by Matt Sampson. Any further discussion? And we will vote. Matt Lohman?
Yes.
Chad Mance?
Yes.
Joe Blackwood?
Yes.
Matt Sampson?
Yes.
Tori Turnbo, yes. The motion carries. Item 4C, discussion and possible action to approve the extension of the current Chromebook lease for 9,000 devices with Trafara LLC through June 30th, 2025, with the possibility of the second payment being removed because of the issuance of new devices in fiscal year 2025. Total cost not to exceed $621,926. Dr. Robinson, thank you for that.
Okay, you're welcome. Well, you know me, I never want to miss out on a good opportunity for the school district. So, and if we do have a bond coming up, this agreement could actually change at that point in time. So really, this agreement is, we're going to buy us some time with our Chromebooks. Our current Chromebooks, we paid for them up to this point, really June of this year, we should be kind of exiting out of that lease. Chromebooks are good for a five-year period on updates, ours fall within that category. This agreement gives us an opportunity to extend that lease through June of '25 and not June of '24. So we're getting a whole nother year warranties, use out of our existing Chromebooks that we have. The benefit of this agreement is it's a, it's a two-piece agreement. We can have, we have an option. And so that one of those options is we can pay $615,000 in July, which will be an FY25 expenditure. So we may not, we will not have a $600,000 expenditure this year. We could pay half of that payment in this fiscal year if things look really good come the springtime. We could pay half of it, and then we could pay the other half in July, which keeps us at that 615 mark. We have the option to pay half of $621,000, that's a $310,000 piece, in July of '24, and then we'll pay the other half of that in July of '25. So we can actually spread our $600,000 Chromebook bill over two fiscal years and not in this current fiscal year. So it's really, we're setting ourselves up for worst-case scenario. I'm optimistic most of the time, but if I'm given an opportunity to really shield some dollars, this is an opportunity to do it. And the cost to carry it over two fiscal years, you're looking at about $6,000 basically to take out a loan over that time. So if something unforeseeable happens, I hate to say this, if we, if we have that massive hailstorm that comes through and ruins our roofs, and we have to hit that million-dollar liability policy, we have some grace here to cover that. And so I'm saying that in all transparency of why do we plan like this? We plan for the unforeseeable. If it's unforeseeable, we can get us two years down the road. Bond passes, we have a bond call, bond passes, and we decide we're ready to start implementing a different rollout on Chromebooks. We haven't spent 600,000 in this fiscal year, maybe we haven't spent anything in this fiscal year, and we start rolling in new Chromebooks next year and the preceding years thereafter. So it's really setting us up with a lot of options without the district expending a lot of dollars upfront. So that's what this agreement does for us, kicks the can down the road, they'd say it in that term, till June of '25.
Okay. And we just seem to be hitting where my device is coming on every time. I'm just kind of curious, 9,000 devices, does that include, is that just getting the devices? Does that include any kind of upkeep, warranties, anything like that?
The 9,000 devices is what we currently have. This is our lease agreement from 2019, 2020. So it's our existing devices. We have about 8,000 of those, 8,200 of those are in student's hands. We have the other remaining group in actually staff members' hands. And so it's, it keeps the warranty, it keeps them up to date. Somebody breaks it, through June of '25, we get a replacement with no cost to the district.
Okay.
And do we feel comfortable with that equipment as far as its usage and its speed and everything else? I mean, do we feel comfortable with that?
We do feel comfortable with it. As with all devices, they're aging. Five years is a good time with a student device. Really, that's, that's why the importance of the bond, I'm just going to be real honest, four years is really where you want to be with them. And so depending on what happens in April, this is an option we can exercise without, without having to be in panic mode with a company and possibly be taken advantage of because of something. If things, things all go well and work out, then that puts us in a position to kind of, kind of do what's needed. I will tell you this, from talking with the companies, and let me tell you why this is kind of important. This time of year is actually the ideal time to buy devices. It's, it's the winter time, most, most schools, most people are buying devices in the summer, so there's kind of a glut of devices on the market, and they want to sell them at a cheaper rate. So if we can actually wait until we get to mid-year next year to start that rollout, we could save up to 20% on devices at that point in time. So there's, I'm telling you, there's so many options this gives us by doing this, and the thing is, we may not even expend a dollar within this agreement. But if the unforeseeable happens and we have to, then we have the options there to exercise at that point in time.
Any further questions? With that, I will entertain a motion to approve item 4C. Motion by Joe Blackwood?
Second.
Second by Matt Sampson. Any further discussion? And we will vote. Matt Lohman?
Yes.
Chad Mance?
Yes.
Joe Blackwood?
Yes.
Matt Sampson?
Yes.
Tori Turnbo, yes. The motion carries. Moves us to item 4D, discussion and possible action to approve the district fiscal year 2024 budget. Dr. Robinson?
All right. First thing is, I have made an error in the 144-page document I sent to you. Mr. Randy Long pointed this out, he's not here tonight, but page six, you have a corrected page six. And the correction was, I actually left FY23 on the far right-hand column, it should have been FY24. And the first total you see, I actually had the net total also listed there. So that's why the numbers didn't add. The good thing, like I told Mr. Long, is that at least the net total was correct, that's the number that matters. So anyways, that's the correction sheet, we're not really going to go into a lot of detail on that, but I wanted you guys to have that. So the next two sets of documents you have, you have a single page, this is the Cliff Notes of the Cliff Notes, if that makes sense. Therefore, that's why you have the yellow highlighting on it. And so I'm going to go over that page, that's the nutshell of it, and then we'll get a little bit more detail after that. And after we kind of wrap that up, if there's any questions, you guys want some more on it, I'd be more than happy to go over that. But we, the one thing we are not going to do is go through 144 pages like the auditor does in the spring. So, all right. So bottom line is, local advarum, I'm projecting about a $700,000 difference this year. And that's local advarum, local giving, all those things, we've had some changes in that, so a reduction in that. State aid this year, we had an increase of $4.9 million. Most of that has been dedicated to staff, staff teacher pay raises. And then we come back and the budget is a little bit up overall, because we have an additional $1.6 million in federal funds. Most of that increase is due to ESER III funds, and this is the last year of it. So we've always set a budget for ESER III, just divided that original number by three, divided last year's number by two. Well, now we don't have no more devisers, so it is what it is. It's about $5.1 million that we have to spend in ESER funds. And so that's where that 1.6 additional comes from. On the expenditure side, actual expenditures over last year were up about $6.3 million. Majority of that is an increased payroll. We did have a $907,000 in one-time stipend issued at the beginning of this fiscal year for all staff. And then state mandated pay raises were about $4 million across the board there. So you can see how everything kind of balances itself out and levels out, and that's where the numbers come from. I am projecting, again, this is an early projection, but a reduction in the fund balance of about $355,000 just because of expenditures, which will leave us with a fund balance at the end of the year of just over $21 million in fund balance, which that is, that is more than enough cushion to get us through where we need to be. Important thing to remember is we are running about $5 million a month in payroll costs alone. alone. So when I came to you guys several years ago and said $13 million was enough to get us there, we weren't quite at $4 million in payroll. And so as payroll goes up, increasing that carryover becomes important because of the, again, the unforeseeable, we always want to be prepared for that. So that, right there, is the budget in the nutshell. We'll go to the little bit more detail work here. Budget narrative, this first group, it just explains all the funds. You guys, I'm pretty sure, are pretty familiar and aware of all of that. Not going to go back through those numbers, but we'll go to the fourth page back, state foundation and incentive aid, just to kind of retouch on this. I think it's always important to compare year to year. State aid last year was $30,170,000. Again, this year, we're at $35,139, a difference of about four point, just over $4.9 million, which is a, a big part of our budget, as you guys are all well aware. Next page is our revenue side. You need to go over to the far right-hand column to see projection on revenue. We just went through the finance report, estimate of needs had us at about $97 million of revenue coming in. That's provided by our auditor, Pat Carroll, who's, he's not our auditor anymore, but he was our auditor, but he still did the estimate of needs for us. So local revenue, we're looking at about $13 million. You can see last year, we brought in 13.7, a reduction of 700,000. Again, these are projections and estimates. Intermediate is our county four mil, working at about $2.1 million right there. State aid, $48,100,000. Federal dollars, 15.9. Excuse me. And then, uh, non-revenue, that's just kind of people who pay for child nutrition, those kind of cash dollars that come in. We're at about 300,000, of course, carryover at 21.3 for a grand total revenue of 100.8 million is what I'm looking at coming in this fiscal year. Next page over is expenditures. I'm not gonna go through each line of expenditures, kind of get down to the total. Sorry, got dried up. $79.8 million is what we're looking at, total projected expenditures on the fiscal year. And you can see those function codes through there. Biggest thing to note is instructional at 1,000 is, oh, thank you, Randy, I'm gonna take a drink. Is $40,700,000 what we're projecting right there. And I'll pause right there if there's any questions on the revenue or expenditure side, because I know that can get pretty detailed as far as the budgeting goes. If you give me just a second, I'll get right to that, at, at the end of this. Don't spoil the surprise at the end of the movie, so. All right, well, are you guys good going on? All right, next page is a history of revenue and expenditure, so this kind of brings those previous two documents together. You can see we're looking at revenue of 100.8 million, expenditures of 79.8 million, changing fund balance is about 1.6 there, and so we're sitting at $21 million in projected fund balance coming in right there. And about, that's about 20.84%. All right, so we come around, we'll skip this fund balance page, because I think we kind of hit that one, and we'll get right to Joe's question. This is the second to last page, and this is actually the statute on fund balance. And so 17% is what we're allowed to have in fund balance, and for us, that's about $17 million when you have $100 million in revenue. FY, then you get to add on top of that your federal dollars that you have coming in, so we have another 15.9 million coming in on that, and that's in this year. So our allowable carryover is about $33 million. So we're, we're far away from any type of penalty or anything like that. One thing to remember is that federal funds will fluctuate. We have 5 million coming off of that federal fund number. So next year, FY25, that number is more than likely going to drop down to about 28 million. And so it just, I want to keep everybody in mind with that, but again, it's great to have the cash flow for our federal programs, because we don't have to wait on the buildup of cash flow to actually expend on our federal dollars, because we're on a reimbursable, you spend the money, then you get reimbursed for it. So that's, that's another good reason to keep our fund balance in a good, healthy position. All right, the last page is kind of a summarization of everything we've talked about. State aid is the big one. I, I'm projecting, this is a really big unknown factor, there's not a lot of people that are real clear on this because of some changes that we had in October reporting. One of those changes is called direct certification, and that's for low socioeconomic students. Our, our direct certification number did increase, but so has several other schools, their low socioeconomic numbers have gone up. And, and direct certification are students who receive some type of state assistance or their families receive state assistance. So sooner care would be a way to get direct certification. So that qualifies you for free and reduced meals. When other schools have that same increase, their allowable money coming in from the state also goes up with that. The factor for low socioeconomic students went from a .25 to a .3, so we gained a nickel for each one of those students in their factor. And so our slice of the pie is changing relative to everybody else's slice of the pie of state aid. It's, and that's why there's a real unknown. There are some people that say we could get 35 more dollars per weighted ADM at midterm. There are others that are saying we might only get $3. There are some that's saying it could be reduced, and that's because there's also some new charter schools that have been started in the state, and they will now, when I talk about getting a slice of the pie, they're going to get a slice of that pie as well. It might be a small slice, but that slice takes away from everybody else's portion that we've been getting. So I'm, I'm projecting a $200,000 decrease in state aid for us at midterm, and that's based on ad valorem and that whole other scenario I just went through. So there's our projected revenue, kind of looking at revenue from the previous year. We brought in $94 million last year, we had $73.4 million in expenditures. That was our carryover. Projected carryover for this year is $21,132,31, a difference of $355,000. Big, big thing, big change coming out of this fiscal year into next, and I know I'm presenting this year's budget, and we're already talking about next year's budget, but that's the state of mind we really need to stay in, is we're here today, but where are we going tomorrow? Is the loss of that $5.1 million in SR III funds that's going away. A lot of that's been spent on one-time projects, one-time improvements to schools. And as that goes away, we have to start budgeting in accordance with that. And so one of the notes that I have down there is next year, we really need to be in an expenditure pattern of about $75 million. We, we need to reduce expenditures. I have a pretty solid plan for that, we'll talk about that more in next year's budget cycle, so I don't want anybody to panic or worry about that. We're in really good footing on the budget this year. If we hit that $100.8 million mark and we keep those expenditures down there around that 78, 79 million mark, we're gonna be in a really good position to take care of students and staff and take care of our, most part of our community moving forward. So feel pretty good about all of these things. If there's any questions on this, I'll take them now. Hopefully that wasn't too much, or not enough, so.
Any questions? With that, I will entertain a motion to approve item four D.
Second.
Motion by Matt Sampson, second by Joe Blackwood. Any further discussion? And we will vote. Matt Lohman?
Yes.
Chad Mance?
Yes.
Joe Blackwood?
Yes.
Matt Sampson?
Yes.
And Tori Turnbo, yes.